Good morning. Thank you for waiting. We're going to call to order this meeting from Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, October 5th, and we will begin with our public statement.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, to renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand and support the county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda are department updates. First, we have from the Health Department, Ms. Lori Kelly. Good morning.
Good morning. We are currently monitoring data on the spread of Omicron. BA5 is currently the predominant sublineage, accounting for approximately eighty-one percent of the national cases, according to the CDC. Specific state data is limited at this time, but a decrease in hospitalizations is noted. Nationwide BF7, BA 2.75, and BA 4.6 are making up around one in five new cases. The public health clinic has vaccines available. Appointments can be made by calling 812-353-3244.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens? Commissioner Jones? Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. We really appreciate you being here and and giving us that updated information. Next up, we have Ms. Mary Morgan here to talk about heading home.
Morning, commissioners and everyone else. I'm glad to be here and we'll get our slides just started. And yeah, I'm here to give you an update on the Heading Home of South Central Indiana project. Yeah, you can go to the next slide and the next one. I'm not sure if you'll be able to see that. I guess I wanted to start out by just thanking you for your generosity. As you know, Monroe County supported our work with 1.2 million during the current fiscal year and has made a commitment for another 1.2 million to sustain our organization and the work that we do. So we're very grateful for that.
You're very familiar with this. Many of you were involved in the Heading Home effort when we started. Our overall goal is to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating. But a lot of that work is focused on housing insecurity, really to try to prevent people from falling into homelessness before some crisis happens. So that's what our work is. Next slide, please. And to do that work, we're focusing on long-term initiatives, structural initiatives, reducing homelessness, increasing affordable housing, providing effective strategies for addressing acute housing issues. And as a reminder, in addition to Monroe County, our partners include the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County, United Way of Monroe County, the City of Bloomington, Bloomington Township, the South Central Housing Network, and many others. And we're really grateful for your involvement. Next slide, please. And just as a reminder, this is the advisory board that guides our work. Commissioner Givens is a part of that. Administrator Purdy is also on that, and it's co-chaired by Ephraim Pfefferman of United Way and Tina Peterson of the Community Foundation. Next slide, please. And next one. We're just going to go over some of the work that we're doing, the current projects, and then things that are being planned. This is just an overview, and we're going to talk a little bit about each one. Next slide, please. One of our biggest initiatives is joining Built for Zero. It's a national network working with over a hundred communities to decrease homelessness. We're the first community in Indiana to join Built for Zero, and that gives us access to all of their resources, including some financial resources. They received a 100 million MacArthur Foundation grant that is going to be passed through to their members. So if we have a project that we want to pilot, we think that we can make a case for that. We can go to Built for Zero and get some funding for that to really leverage your funds in a significant way. Next slide, please. Our initial goals for Built for Zero, and this will be a multi-year process working with them, we're trying to ensure that our region has quality data. We're going to be working on that probably for the next several months. We hope to have a public dashboard available in early 2023, but we're already reporting out numbers. We don't have full participation, so not all of the people who are working with clients who are experiencing homelessness participate in the same database. So we're trying to work through some of those issues. It's a bit challenging, but we've made some progress, and I'm optimistic about that. We're also putting an initial focus on people who are veterans who are homeless. We feel like that's a relatively small population, so we can kind of figure out how to work through the process with that group. And we also created an advisory committee to help us with that. There are a lot of services for veterans, so trying to be able to connect those services to the people who need them. And Stephen Miller with the county is a member of that, and I have to say, he's been a fantastic partner, so we really appreciate his work. Next slide, please. We're also providing logistical support for the South Central Housing Network. That is the six-county region that's set up by HUD and the IHCD, which is the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority. So those counties include Morgan, Monroe, Lawrence, Owen, Green, and Martin. And members are encouraged, members who receive federal funding have to be part of that. So it's a good parallel organization for us. I'm now a member of the board. We provide minutes for the board. We provide, you know, help with agenda setting, and then we work on several different committees that we've created in partnership with the Housing Network. Next slide, please. One of the first committees we created was a cross-agency training. We'd heard from people that many different staff in different organizations have the same training needs, de-escalation, trauma-informed care, those kinds of things that maybe an individual agency can't afford to provide the training as regularly. So we put together this committee, members from different agencies, and are developing professional trainings to educate and empower and support staff. We are, next slide, please. We held our first training session last week, and it was fantastic. Leah Hicks, who works with the Corporation for Supportive Housing, gave us an overview of housing first. And then we had a panel discussion with Forrest Gilmore of Beacon, Melissa Burgess of HealthNet, and Emily Pike of New Hope for Families. And it was really informative. We had a pretty good turnout, and we're looking to do this in some form, hopefully, each quarter. So the next one would be in early 2023. Next slide, please. We're also working with the Housing Network on an advocacy committee. They had started that already, but it kind of fallen off, and so it's been rebooted. And we're just basically looking for common issues that we can do to support housing security and advocate for housing security throughout the region. Next slide, please. We're also developing a street outreach policy. We've created a committee for that. That's just still in the very early stages. One of the things with Built for Zero is that they encourage you to have community-wide or region-wide policy so that everybody's kind of on the same page. And they provide templates for that as a starting point. So street outreach is one of those. We have many different organizations that are doing street outreach. So to try to have a standardized policy is something that we're looking toward. Next slide, please. We also heard that housing navigation resources are really a challenge, and so we've hired Deborah Meyerson of Meyerson Consulting to put together a housing navigation resource guide. There are guides out there, but a lot of times they are not up to date. They're not comprehensive. They don't tell you the information that people need to know. So after sort of assessing what's out there, we decided that this was a need that would be really helpful throughout the community. We're starting in Monroe County and hope to expand that to other counties in this region eventually. And again, that's a first-quarter 2023 launch date. Next slide, please. Recognizing that this is a regional issue, we've been doing a lot of outreach to the six-county area. This is a picture of a convening we had in Lawrence County with Bedford, the Bedford mayor, and in partnership with United Way of South Central Indiana. It's that we really look for partners who can do the convening and call the stakeholders together, so it's not us trying to go into a county that we're maybe not familiar with. And so for Lawrence County, we partnered with the United Way down there. Next slide, please. In Owen County, we partnered with the Community Foundation, who convened a group of stakeholders. Really interesting discussion. And then last month, we also met with the Green County Nonprofit Alliance in partnership with the Green County Foundation. And we're continuing to follow up with that. We've had other meetings to try to just assess needs and then figure out how we can partner to address those needs. Next slide, please. Oh, you're ahead of me. That's great. We convene weekly shelter check-ins. Angie Purdy is part of that. It includes shelter providers, of course, but also folks from the city. Lori Kelly from Monroe County Public Health is there, IU Health and others, and it's just really a quick meeting where we give updates on what's happening, and we try to spot trends early and address issues if there's sort of a common need. Next slide, please. We're helping support the Housing and Eviction Prevention Program. And again, this is more of the housing security piece. We're partially funding this year's staff in partnership with the Community Justice and Mediation Center. And then we're going to be working with them to reconvene that group that originally founded the HEP program to talk about sustainability. What resources do we need? Do we have? And where should that best live? And that's just something that's going to be TBD. We're also developing an eviction court watch program with volunteers, and this is one of those things at the very early stages. We're trying to find a volunteer coordinator to help us with that. It's a model that Prosperity Indiana put together, and we think that it might not be necessary in Monroe County because we have the HEP program, and there's some eyes on that, and we have some good judicial folks that are running those eviction courts. But in other counties, it may be not so transparent. So just having a volunteer there who is present and who's kind of recording some of the information that's happening so that we can have a better sense of what's happening related to eviction in other counties. Next slide, please. We have applied for a 1.5 million IU Health Community Impact Investment Grant for a rental renovation program. And again, this is, we're looking for sources where we can leverage our resources. The goal of this is to create access to more rental units. The idea is that if there are landlords who have rental units that are subpar, maybe not even habitable, we can provide funding for them to renovate those projects in exchange for giving long-term leases to tenants who have vouchers. It's increasingly difficult for landlords to find landlords who will do that, so we're trying to look for innovative ways to address that issue. Next slide, please. Another landlord incentive is the Landlord Risk Mitigation Program in partnership with the Bloomington Housing Authority. They are creating a program so that if a landlord doesn't want to rent because they're afraid that the apartment will be damaged or that the tenant might run out without paying rent, they can be part of this program, and so they'll have that funding available to kind of backstop them if there's an issue. We have, so the program hasn't launched yet, but their funding is only for the city of Bloomington, so we're going to supplement that fund to allow them to go outside into the rest of Monroe County. Because tenants don't really, you know, they don't really see those boundaries, and so we're hoping that that will give more options to people who are looking for housing. Next slide, please. We hope to start a community loan center, and this is kind of on the financial security piece. I'm sure you're aware of predatory lending. This is another program of Prosperity Indiana that would address that by offering, it would be an employee-based program. So if you are an employee of a participating employer, such as the county perhaps, you would be able to access quickly loans, probably up to $2,000 for emergencies. Like if your kid has a dental emergency, or if your car breaks down and you just need quick funding at a lower rate, and you could deduct that from your paycheck. So we're looking for a partner institution. I just heard yesterday, actually, from CDFI Friendly Bloomington that they are not going to be participating, so we're just going to be scouting around for some other financial institution. I think Fort Wayne is one of the counties and, or one of the areas in Indiana that's already doing this with some success. So I think, you know, it feels like low-hanging fruit to me, but we just need to find the right partners. Next slide, please. And just a quick overview of our communications. We have a website that's still being developed, but it's up. We have a monthly newsletter that I hope you're getting, or you should be on the list. We have an Instagram and Facebook account that are pretty active, and we're just trying to find different ways that we can communicate the work, not only that Heading Home is doing, but that is happening with housing security throughout the region. Next slide, and then one more. Yeah. And I just wanted to highlight that we have several partnerships underway with IU that are really helpful. We're working with the Grant Writing Course to identify other potential funding sources for us. We're working with an MPA Local Economic Development Course that is researching landlord incentives that other communities use, making presentations, and just really trying to leverage the resources of IU. Next slide, please. One of those, the resources is data support. There's a data team led by Isak Kenterasari. I'm sure you've heard of him. They are, it's a team of staff, actually, and they're helping us with the data cleanup that I mentioned earlier related to Built for Zero. They've just been instrumental, and we've just, we've met with them a few times, and so they're really excited to take on this. It's a pilot project for a new data support center they're developing. We're also going to be the case competition partner for Kelly Institute of Social Impact in the spring. We're going to present the teams with the challenge, and then those student teams will present solutions, which will be judged. And if you're interested in being judged, let me know. And then we will receive $10,000 to implement the winning team's solutions. So it comes with a little cash, which is great. Next slide, please. And just finally, I wanted to mention our two interns, Shay Berry, who's a Cox Scholar intern. She's a freshman. And that program gives interns four years with the partner organization, so that's fantastic. We're really looking forward to working with her for the next four years. And Lizzie Wright is a Bloomington Press Club intern who's helping us with some marketing. And that is an overview. I feel like I sped through it. I'm happy to answer any questions now. And of course, anytime any of you want to talk to me or anyone involved in our project, we would be happy to talk with you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. What amazing amount of information. Commissioner Givens?
I was so excited about the forward movement on this. This started as a plan that was created years ago that sat on a shelf, and this isn't sitting on a shelf.
Thanks, Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I'm just really pleased to hear how multi-pronged this plan is. You're approaching things from so many different directions. And this is a pretty massive problem that is going to require more than one solution.
I agree. Yeah, no, I think it's a great point, just trying to deal with all of the facets of this, you know, lots of spinning plates. And just want to thank you for all your hard work, everyone that's working on the committee, Commissioner Givens, Ms. Purdy, thank you. There's a lot to do, and I'm just grateful that folks are dedicated to this and doing a lot of great things. So yeah, keep us posted on information on how we can become part of the lending program. And, you know, I think that's a wonderful idea because that's often a make or break for a lot of families. That small amount of money means the world, and it means not being able to pay rent or utilities or for food or something else that's a necessity. So I think it's a great, great idea. So thank you for all the information. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Are there any other departments that have an update for us? Use your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay. All right. Next, we have public comments. The section on public comment is for items that are not on the agenda, just like our agenda items. Commenters are limited to three minutes per person. There will be a clock that will be running at 2 minutes and 30 seconds. You will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means that you have 30 seconds to wrap up your statement. And the clock will be visible here in the NetUHill room as well as on screen.
Good morning, commissioners and everyone in attendance. My name is Mike McAfee. I'm with Visit Bloomington. The previous time I was here in late August, I was here to advocate for a partnership between the city and the county to move forward with the Convention Center expansion. That's not why I'm here today, but I would be remiss if I didn't say the tourism ministry is still rooting for that partnership to be formed as soon as possible. I came here today because I left that meeting in August disappointed in myself for not doing a better job of keeping you informed of Visit Bloomington's effort to promote countywide tourism. Mostly what I want to cover today happened in quarter three, but I do want to say, right at the end of June, during Limestone Month, June is always Limestone Month in Monroe County, we hosted a sold-out Empire Quarry Tour. We had several travel writers attend that tour, including one that's working on a Monroe County limestone story for American History Magazine that we think will be published in 2023. You never know until you see it. Last week, we hosted a USA Today writer that was here doing a 10 Best of story. Looking forward to seeing that. We hosted a golf writer on Monday and Tuesday of this week who's covering both the Foul Course and the Eagle Point courses. They, he loved the Eagle Point course. Eagle Point has done a great job this year, is doing a good job of coming back. Golf made a resurgence during the pandemic, you know, just because of distancing and things like that. We've got a ton of interesting golf in our area due to the new course at Indiana University, the Fowl. We've done media appearances in this third quarter. We had coverage in Indianapolis, Chicago, Cincinnati, Louisville, Peoria, Evansville, Nashville, Tennessee, and many others. As always, there's a great deal of interest from the media and tourists in fall colors and outdoor travel in Monroe County in the fall. We urge everyone to travel safely and be responsible. Please help us take care of our precious natural resources. We're on pace to have the most people ever use our website this year, visitbloomington.com, to plan a trip to the area. We average approximately 80,000 people per month on our site to make travel plans. In quarter three alone, we had over 21,000 people log onto the Kiwanis Bloom Festival microsite that we created and host for them on our site. Obviously, that's held at the fairgrounds. Over 30,000 people used our website to plan fall travel, and over 5,000 of those were for fall festivals, including the Monroe County Fall Festival, the Steinsville Stone Quarry Festival, and several others. Over 10,000 people logged on to our Monroe Lake page. We're looking forward to the Hilly Hundred coming up, October 21 through 23, obviously hosted in Ellisville, and various Halloween events that are coming up. These are the top 10 places that visitors went during third quarter. Griffey Lake Nature Preserve 10, Stillwater Norfolk Wildlife Resting Area 9, Fairfax State Recreation Area 8, Student Rec Center at IU 7, IU Memorial Stadium 6, Simon Scott Assembly Hall 5, Hoosier National Forest 4, Monroe Lake 3, Paine Town State Rec Area 2, and College Mall was number one. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll be back in January to update you again.
Great. Thank you so much. You got it all in. Good for you. I have to tell you, we wouldn't have cut you off, but yeah, that's great. I appreciate it.
I actually practiced and wrote it out. Thank you to the county for all your support. Always appreciate you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else have a public comment for items not on our agenda?
I like the turquoise pen. Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. My name is Tamby Michael Cassidy, and I'm a resident here at Monroe County. And I just first want to say I appreciate the ability to come to this meeting at any Wednesday and be able to provide public comment because I think it's so important to all of our residents that we are able to have a voice of what happens in our community. So I just want to talk about a couple of things. I thought it was excellent that Mary gave such a thorough presentation about the housing shortages that we have in Monroe County and the crisis that occurs there. And I think that we can do something about it from yet another facet. And one of those facets that I've identified since being involved in it quite a bit over the last couple of years with a petition that involved housing myself was that some of the regulations that we require of our residents are starting to become burdensome, I think. And I think that we need to provide those ordinances as a means for people to be able to keep their homes in an affordable way. And, you know, we're requiring different types of surveys and things like that that are very costly. And I just want us to make sure that we consider that when moving forward. If you're a homeowner and, you know, the cost of repairing your home goes up $2,000 because, you know, you need something completely replaced, let's make it easier instead of harder. I mean, all of these things affect our ability to have and live in a home, not only from an ownership basis but a rental basis. One of my rental properties, I made nothing on because I have to keep up repairs of an older home. But I'm there for that family and doing that. I don't know how long I could do that, but that's how it goes. I also want to remind the community, and I did a post today on Nextdoor, that they can give their opinions about the zoning of their home and any other properties by following that link, and I posted that link today. And I just want to encourage members of the public to do that because it's not just your property that you can make a comment on, but you can make other comments. And things that I've identified there are that those maps are a little bit confusing. The churches that I saw on there are not identified as a type of zoning that I would relate to that. They say they're residential. So why is that? And, you know, maybe we need to hear more from planning on that. And like even one of the MCCSC schools is zoned as residential lot. So I really don't understand the logic behind that, but I did make a comment, and I encourage others to do the same. So that's all I had to say for today. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Could we get TSD to correct the screen in front of the commissioners, please?
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners and esteemed staff. This is Christopher Engie from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I first want to just echo statements made by our colleague at Visit Bloomington, Mike McAfee, on the Convention Center. I spoke last week about the process moving forward and the momentum. We hope that due to poll results with the key stakeholders have come through, and that we have a scheduled meeting. As you know, the chamber doesn't really have an opinion on how that expansion happens, but since 2017, we've been collecting that food and beverage tax for this very purpose, and we provided you three options to move forward. But why I'm here today is to start by thanking the candidates and elected officials, some of which were in this room this morning, who attended the chamber's elect connect on Monday. It was a wonderful opportunity to have our esteemed public officials and those vying for that same responsibility to be in one room engaging with our members and the community at large. In addition, the chamber has also partnered with the League of Women Voters, among other entities, for their candidate forums. These are wonderful opportunities to become more educated and engaged voters. CATS has these archived. Those that have been completed, we've had the MCC School Board Forum, the US House District 9, and the Indiana House Districts 46, 60, and 62. Coming up Monday, we have, on the 10th, we have the Monroe County Commissioners and Council Forum. This is followed by the law and justice races with the sheriff and circuit court, District 7. This brings me and I push to get the public to register, to vote, and make it to the polls to do their civic duty. We want this to be more than just showing up at the polls. I want each of everybody listening today to get their friends and family out to the polls. If you are out at a local eatery, ask your server if they registered to vote, if they plan on voting. Our county primary voter was abysmal 12% that made it to the polls, which does not do justice on how wonderful this community remains. We'll be lucky to hit 25% for the general election. There is too much at stake in this election. There is too much at stake in this election at a local level when it comes to justice reform, sustainable growth, how to spend the ARPA funds, the convention center expansion. I spoke about the sustainability of Lake Monroe and the new jail, which brings me to my last point. We are teaming up with. I brought I brought props today. Teaming up with the Monroe County Indiana National Organization of Women to get out the vote. We have these posters, vote where you sleep. They are at our office that can be picked up. We are on the southeast corner of Rogers and Sixth Street. It's on a table. You just have to come in and pick them up. You have the QR code here. We have some other other fine sponsors and we'll also have a how to get to the polls through a contract with Uber coming soon. But we thank you for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have public comment for items not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to our agenda. Item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes from September 28, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any comments, edits, corrections? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes for September 28, 2022, signify by saying aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable October 5, 2022.
And? Sorry. It's on the other page. Here we go.
And payroll October 7, 2022. Sorry.
That's all right. Second. We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Lutler. Please tell us about it.
Good morning, commissioners. Accounts payable for October 5, 2022 is $1,157,266.66. And for payroll, October 7, 2022 is $1,739,108.86.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
And I don't either. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either raise your hand on the zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving claims docket accounts payable October 5, 2022 and payroll October 7, 2022, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries three zero. Next, we will move on to new business.
Move approval of the Indiana Department of Health Title 28, TAMP Contract Amendment Number One, Fund Name Title 20, TAMP Fund Number 8150-9622 in an amount of $12,000.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Kelly, tell us all about it.
Hello. This request is for approval of the current Title 20 and TANF Contract Amendment. Based upon a recently submitted budget projection, the Indiana Family Health Council has awarded Monroe County Health Department a reallocation of an additional $12,000 to the current TANF contract to cover the Title 10 clinic through September 30 of 2022.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I had to go back and like dig through the contract to make sure that we were approving something that is already in the past. So.
Right.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, we've seen this a number of times in the past.
It's great to have this funding.
Yes, certainly is.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we board up on the time machine and approve this. So let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health Title 20, TANF Grant Contract Amendment Number One, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of BI Inc. Electronic Monitoring Service Agreement, Fund Name Probation Public Safety, LIF, Fund Number 1170 in an amount of $160,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second and we're waiting for the promotion of Ms. Wright to panelist so she can tell us all about this.
Hi, good morning. The Community Corrections and Probation Department have worked with BI for at least 20 years since even since I've been here. BI provides our electronic monitoring equipment for home detention services as well as something called Soberlink, which is a mobile alcohol testing unit that a client carries with them and can take alcohol tests throughout the day. BI actually reached out to us and offered some lower costs, which we will never say no to. And we've just always had a great relationship with them and I think that's why they reached out to work with us. Yeah, again, we've been working for 20 years and this will help save some money.
Great, thank you. T S D, can you get the captioning back on? Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Is this an amount not to exceed 160,000 or is it a set contract?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
It is this an amount not to exceed 160,000 or is it a set contract?
So we pay by the equipment that's being used. So we never know in advance for a year. We don't, we never know how much we're going to spend in a year. 160,000 is how much has been appropriated. I we've never had to go above that. So if we ever did, I'm sure we would come back to county council to have more appropriated, but we essentially rent the equipment and we rent as needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I have a question and I think it's something you mentioned, but it wasn't clear to me because our captioning wasn't on. So if there's a reduction in cost per day, is that then carried to the person who's on probation? Do they pay less per day?
They do not. There are other, so there are other costs involved besides just the renting. For example, if a equipment gets lost or damaged, we are required to pay for that. So the the cost to the client or the participant is not changing. And for home detention, to wear the GPS monitor, it's $16 a day. And then for the Soberlink, the the participant pays $8 a day.
Wow. That's that's pricey. Okay, thank you so much. All right. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Electronic Monitoring Service Agreement with BI Inc., signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of Bio One Northwest Indianapolis Service Agreement, Fund Name and Number to be determined in an amount of $3,500 per day for up to seven days.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and I and it's so happy that Mary gave her presentation this morning because this this and really all the items I'm about to present are kind of tied to to that program. Last week, we received a call or met information from a homeowner that there was a homeless encampment on one of our properties. We went and investigated that and indeed it is. There is one, so we in the process of getting that cleaned up, so it's not a trash heap with a bunch of needles in it. We needed to, we need to get it cleaned out. These are the same individual, this is the same company we contracted with when we had the one behind the old Kmart to do that kind of cleanup and everybody was very happy with their work. The seven days, I think, is probably longer than what they needed, but they didn't want to give a firm commitment due to some of the the issues we had with the last cleanup. So this is to get them out there to to start cleaning up once the time has run, which I believe will be tomorrow morning for them, for the people to to find other arrangements.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I just want to thank Mr. Cockrell for getting on this so quickly.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, these are situations that are somewhat dangerous for everyone living around there or working around there. It's very unfortunate that it happens at all. And really, there's not much we can do but shut it down and clean it up, which generally means it just goes someplace else.
And I would just say, well, I appreciate the thanks. It really needs to be spread out a lot further than just me. I'm just presenting it at the meeting. Chief Deputy Brummett contacted me. We've worked with emergency management. We've worked with our building and fleet manager. We've worked with, you know, all kinds of people in the commissioner's office. I mean, this was truly more than just me. This is a big effort.
Yeah, and highway?
Yes.
Yes, there's many things to go around with with this difficult work, but we appreciate everyone's contributions and quick and quick response really to a to a public health concern. So thank you for that. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dave Askins with the Beast Care Bulletin. Some of you know this already, but I'll just say it again. One of my goals is eventually to transform public commentary time into occasions when rank and file citizens just ask questions like a reporter would. I do understand there's no legal obligation for you to provide answers, but I know for sure you're not going to answer the questions if they're not asked in the first place. So in that spirit, on this item, I'm hoping you could lay out for us what the protocol is for displacing an encampment. So for example, the city of Bloomington has something that they call a general police order. I mean, it's a document that actually the heading says general police order on displacement of homeless encampments. And it includes things like timing for the required posting of the notice at the site, preservation of belongings, how long the belongings have to be preserved, things like that. Does the county have something like that? And even if there isn't an equivalent county document, I'm wondering if you could lay out the specific steps that were followed in this case. So from the description in the contract, it sounds like there was a notice posted of some kind and there was an order to vacate. So on the order to vacate, is that a commissioner's order? Is that a sheriff's order? Is it a plan commission order? Whose order was it exactly? So basically, I'm just hoping you could give us some additional background that helps maybe answer the question, why now? Why not three weeks from now? Why not three weeks ago? And the other just nuts and bolts question. My understanding was that this was public property, but from what Mr. Cockrell said, it sounds like it might actually be private property. So if we could get some clarity on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. Yeah, we can address those questions. Yes, we do have protocols in place and I don't know if Ms. Purdy or Mr. Cockrell would like to address the questions, but please do.
Well, I guess it is on county property. I think that's the easiest question. We we reviewed that. We do have a couple of different order or part of a couple of different parts of our Monroe County code are touched by how we respond to these things. I don't remember the code sections off the top of my head, but I could get those to you. Our process has been, you know, once we learn of of this issue and we we get complaints, we we go inspect, we look and make sure that there is indeed a problem. Our our requirements are that once we post notice, we cannot move a personal property for three days and and then after three days, we can collect that if it's trash or not valuable at all or not. Or basically, if it's trash, we can go ahead and just dispose of that. If it is personal property, then we have to hold that for one week. If it's something of exceptional value, we have to hold that for two weeks. And so that's all part of our our code section. And I can forward that to you after the meeting.
And I can tell you, those are codes 258 and 257. And we send posted out the notice, we notified that homeless shelters that we communicate on Mondays. We let them know the situation at hand. The way this came to our attention is the a neighbor actually on a associated piece of property, that's their private property, emailed the city of Bloomington and City Bloomington then forwarded that to the chief of police, who then forwarded it to our sheriff's office, who then reached out to county administration and we then made the arrangements to go out and ask, you know, assess the situation and we follow our guidelines regarding the notice and we've already, as I said, we reach out, we try to get the street resource officers involved to help people so that it's not, we're not criminalizing the situation. We're trying to not make things harder for them. So we're hoping to get them into a safe environment, but we also have to look out for the public safety of our community.
And public health is a big part of that. And yeah, there's a lot of outreach that happens. I know that Ms. Purdy CC'd us on a lot of email exchanges, not just with, you know, legal staff, law enforcement, health department, highway. But we we saw some communications with Beacon and other relevant folks in the community who can provide resources. And I think the one question that hasn't been addressed is why not three weeks ago? We didn't know about it. And why not three weeks from now? Because you don't want to wait on a public health issue for three weeks. So I think we've addressed all the questions. Yes, okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Glad you asked.
I can also add regarding the fund name, we will be looking at this in community capital development. And I anticipate we're going to have to do those category transfers, try to avoid an additional appropriation request, but that's where we're at at this point.
I'm not sure that it fits under Q cap, but but I think we need to look at that. And if we need to do additional, we'll just go to council and do it. But I I don't think, I'm not sure it fits that. So we should we should look at that and and see. But yes, whatever way we have to do it, obviously, we we come across this a lot. We're doing this with the we have been doing this with the Fullerton property and and we still have some things with Fullerton property that are, you know, fund named TBD, so that's how things have to go until we can.
Right, yeah, no, this, we've we've used, it does meet the criteria under the CCD as a county
Okay.
property
Okay.
situation. And then we have the special projects that allows us to some flexibility.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Ah, we've lost our captions again. Could you get our captions back on the screen? Thank you so much. I don't know where they keep going. There they are. Thank you so much. All right, excellent. I don't see any other public comments. So with that, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Bio One NW Indianapolis Service, it's a service agreement, sorry, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of contract with Hydrology Inc. Carst Survey for Fullerton Pike Property, Fund Name and Fund Number to be determined in an amount of $3,300.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, and as we are moving through the process of of looking at this property, it it came to, we had got a report from from that and that environmental that we really need to do a geology study to to see where the the cars features are and to make sure that we 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 go to plan on where how we're going to develop it. We have all that information. So this is a contract with a local company who does this work. They do, they do, they've done all, they did section four for end up and not section five. And this parcel is actually in section five, but we're hoping they can leverage some of that relationship to get us to get a lot of the information that the state had used when they were building the interstate. So this contract is for $3,300. If if it's approved today, we should have the results back prior to the November. If if it's approved today, we should have the results back prior to the November City Plan Commission meeting, which which we anticipate that they'll be interested in the information contained in this report as well.
Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just pleased to be moving ahead with this as quickly as we can.
Yeah, thanks for your hard work on this. There's a lot going on. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract with Hydrogeology, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, next item, please.
Move approval of Deckard Land Surveying LLC for Fullerton Pike property, fund name and number to be determined in an amount not to exceed $16,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes. This is kind of a culmination of a lot of these reports we've been doing. You know, we've had our environmental individuals out to, and they flagged some things. The hydrology group that we just talked about has flagged some things. So, what this is going to do is going to do your typical boundary survey of of the property. But it'll also take all those flaggings and all those markings and put them into a topography survey as well. So, this is kind of going to wrap up and provide a lot of information if we move forward on on actual construction that will help with the design and the master planning of that side.
Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Uh, any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Deckard Land Surveying, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Beam Longest NEF Supplemental Number One, Rockport Road Bridge Number 308, Fund Number Cumulative Bridge Fund. Sorry, that was Fund Name Cumulative Bridge Fund Number 1135 in an amount of $17,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning. We do have a a project going on for the replacement of Bridge 308 on Rockport Road, which is just west of Bowlin Lane. This is to include the hydraulic modeling and the DNR permit for that project.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
I don't have any either. Thanks for continuing to work on all of these projects. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the supplemental number one agreement with Beam Longest NEF for Rockport Road Bridge Number 308, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item.
Move approval of End Up Change Order Number Four, Sample Road Reconstruction Project, Fund Name Sample Road Phase One, Fund Number 8161.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
Um, so when we began this project, we had had some existing change orders that we will be bringing forward. They've changed the process for the change orders, so we had change order number four, and it officially needs to be deleted, eliminated, so that we can resubmit it in the new process. So, this would be eliminating change order four that's actually really never came to you yet. Paperwork.
Comments, questions?
Bureaucracy, right.
That's it. Anything else? Commissioner Jones?
No.
That makes sense. The one thing I will say is, I typically don't drive on I-69, but I did notice that there aren't any notices on I-69, so this is an end dot issue that say that Eastbound Sample Road is closed.
Closed.
Yeah.
I can check into that. I'm sure there's different regulations on
I have no idea.
what they can put on I-69, but I can check.
I have no idea. I've had to warn a few people, and you know, I go, well, it's not posted. It's like, oh, it's true.
Yeah, I I understand.
That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor approving End Up Change Order Number Four for the Sample Road Reconstruction Project, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2022-33 to amend various traffic ordinances.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
I don't think I'll read each one of these. I think it would be confusing, but we are amending our ordinances that deal with yield locations, speed limits, stop locations, all traffic signal locations. All of these have been taken to the Monroe County Traffic Commission Board. They are warranted with the Indiana MUTCD. Probably the biggest change on here is the addition of all the signs that will be in the new roundabouts for Curry Pike, Smith Pike, and Woodyard Road. The status of that project is, we hope to have that open by Tuesday. We're just waiting for some final sign installations, and then that project should be ready to be open for the public. So, we wanted to get the ordinance in place and get the signs in place.
That's great. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I would like to note for the public that some of the what's on our agenda for this is because you put in these new roundabouts.
Correct.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just was wondering if a signal is the same as a stop sign?
It would. So, we have to do an ordinance for anything that's a regulatory, and that's what we would consider for a traffic signal or stop sign, yield sign location. So, it's a little bit different of an ordinance, but it's the same type of traffic regulation, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, I am, yeah, I'm really impressed, and with all the work that got done on Smith and Curry, that is amazing. It it is amazing. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the completion. I'm sure a lot of residents out there are.
They've actually been great. I mean, they've been very patient for all the construction that's been out in there. A lot of traffic goes through that intersection, so I, it's been a really smooth project, so does.
It's really good.
For a project, for a road construction project.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're thrilled to get that open.
Yeah. Um, and and then under the signal side of things, there are some things that are kind of older that have already been in place, like Walnut Drawer, right? That's that's been there for a little bit, so we're just kind of playing catch up to.
Yeah, cleaning up some ordinances and such. You'll notice the deletion of a traffic signal. That's because we no longer have the Curry Pike and Woodyard Road traffic signal.
Right.
So, we have to clean up those ordinances and get those out of there.
Right. Um, and then there's there's some hawk signals on here, and these are pedestrian crossings for trails, which is great. I do have a question about how we put signage up for roundabouts. Is that a state standard? Is that part of that code book that you use?
It's part of what the design standards, and then we are required to find, to follow the MUTCD, which is the manual, man- manual on uniform traffic control devices. Indiana has their own manual, and we are required to follow that for all signage.
Okay, great. I've noticed that roundabouts in other communities are signed very differently than ours.
Yeah, and there's there's a, can, they can have a lot of signs, can be very confusing. We try and not overwhelm, but follow what we are required to put up for, to make sure the traffic flows as easily as it's supposed to flow in those roundabouts.
There you go. Thank you so much. All right, let's see if, thank you for answering all our questions. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none, all.
Hello?
There we go, okay.
This is Marty Hawk, and of course, this intersection is of great interest to the people in this district. I was just there, maybe a half hour ago. It's a beautiful morning to go out and see Monroe County and the traffic, while it was not heavy at all. I know it will be. Just with all those barrels down, once they all get down, and we get back to normal living, I think it's going to be wonderful. I do have concern that some of the cut-through traffic here in this neighborhood will be a lot greater because people do cut through to get to Smith Pike. And so, Smith Pike is going to suddenly start getting busy again, so I hope that people on Smith Pike will be very cautious about pulling out onto Smith Pike, because we've we've been getting real used to not much traffic there, and it's going to be right back to heavy traffic again. So, just heads up, folks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. All those in favor approving Ordinance 2022-33s signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next item.
Move approval of Butler Fairman and Souper Inc., Supplemental Number Two for Cars Trail Connector, Fund Name 2020 GeoBond, Fund Number 4813, and an amount of $22,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
The supplemental is for utility potholing, additional design services, additional geotechnical investigation for pavement, boardwalk foundation, and a culvert extension, since we kind of modified the route on that original trail connection.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I didn't understand what utility potholing is. Is that that we actually dig the?
So, you take like a core of the pavement out to figure out where utilities are and how deep they are. So, you're kind of making a pothole dip into the pavement, so you can locate the utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agreement with Butler Fairman Seaford Inc. for Supplemental Number Two for Cars Trail Connector, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2022-31 Ray Barn Renovation HP Overlay.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Myers?
Hello, can you hear me all right?
We sure can.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to share my screen here for this presentation. Okay. All right, so this is Ordinance 22 dash, excuse me, 2022-31, also known as REZ-22-6. So, the Ray Barn renovation historic preservation overlay rezone. This is located at 4595 North Maple Grove Road, and it is currently zoned State Residential One, or RE1. Okay, so a bit of summary here. This is a request to amend the zoning map to designate the property with with the historic preservation overlay district. And the intention behind this overlay district is to provide preservation as well as some of the other perks, if you will, for the HP overlay district onto this property. The petitioner or property owner is seeking to establish an additional dwelling unit within one of the historic structures located on the site. And in order to do that, go through that process, the first step is to acquire the HP overlay. And I will go through what they, the next steps they have to go to. If this were to be approved, what they would need to do with planning and the HP board as well. So, overall, the most recent IHSSI County Survey ranks this property, the Ben Owens Farmstead, as outstanding. Monroe County interim report 1989 ranks this farmstead also as outstanding. The outstanding designation means that it has enough historic or architectural significance that is already listed or should be considered for individual listing in the National Register of Historic Places. HP overlay does not negate the underlying RE1 zone. So, any more restrictive requirements that come out through the RE1 zone would apply if conflicting with the HP overlay. All right. So, if approved, the petitioner intends to proceed with the historic adaptive reuse use classification for this property in order to receive permits to renovate a barn structure on the property into an additional dwelling unit. The petitioner has stated that the original farmstead house, they will be having their children, their children's families move into that house. And they would still like to be on the property, spending time with their family as well, so they are seeking to renovate the barn structure on the property to accommodate a single dwelling unit. The historic adaptive reuse use category is listed as conditional in the RE1 zone in Chapter 833. So, in order to get that used approved, the petitioner must submit a conditional use variance request to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If that request is approved, the petitioner must submit construction plans and site plan, as well as some other items to be reviewed by the historic preservation board, who then can issue a certificate of appropriateness if the renovation work is deemed acceptable and is staying along the lines of keeping the the historic nature of the structure intact. If denied, the petitioner may continue to operate the property as is with its existing single tenant residence and any of the available land use classifications permitted under the RE1 zone, and they would not have the HP overlay designations protections. So, any HP overlay designation must meet certain criteria, and these criteria items are evaluated by the historic preservation board review. And the three highlighted ones are the items that the historic preservation board of review worked with the petitioner in solidifying that these did apply to this particular property. So, one, an association with events that have made significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. Number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. And number five, high artistic values. There's a description in each of these criterias and how they apply to the property specifically in the packet that was provided. Okay, so next, I have some maps and some pictures just to scroll through here rather quickly. It's on West, excuse me, North Maple Grove Road. This item over here on the right side of the screen is pulled from the Charred database for historic sites. Current zoning is RE1, and the comprehensive plan has it designated as Monroe County Urbanizing Area Suburban Residential. Okay, so here are some photographs of the property. We do have several structures that are sort of nature on the property. This, where you can see my cursor, is the barn structure that they are intending to establish a dwelling unit within. This is the existing farmstead that has high artistic value, as stated by the historic preservation board. There is a lot of low dry stone stacked walls on the property as well. It's can be found in many different places. This up here is the original log cabin or summer kitchen. And then over here, we do have a small cemetery with two headstones, as well as a pool that had been installed sometime in the more recent future or recent times. And then down here, we have a few other structures, a small shed, as well as a old print house that has seen various different uses through time on the property. Here is that that old print shop, and then in the background, down here on the right side, in the right corner of your screen, is the barn, and then here's some more pictures. On the left side is that print shop structure. The, on the right side is the small shed. Here is the historic barn and the a brief glimpse in the inside that will be converted into, a portion of it will be converted to a dwelling unit. Here is the existing farmstead. And other pictures of the site, including the pool, some of the dry stone walls, and the two headstones here in the cemetery, as well as the log cabin, summer kitchen. All right, so a few more items here to take a glance at. This is the letter to the historic preservation board provided by the current owners and petitioners, as well as a site plan map that they had provided that outlines some of the location of the structures on the property, including the old print shop, shed, barn, garage, log cabin, et cetera. The petitioner also provided a brief history of the Owens Farmstead through their own researching, their own research of historic documents. So, we can come back to this if you have any questions. I'm sure that the petitioner So we can come back to this if you have any questions. I'm sure that the petitioner can answer questions regarding the sort of nature of the property as well. And these are some submitted photos from petitioner. I keep scrolling through these. Here is a snapshot of the shard database, writing some information about the architectural significance of the structure as well as some other historic preservation information pieces that all lead to it being designated as outstanding. All right, so the plan commission met on August sixteenth and forwarded to the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation, a vote of seven to zero based on the findings of fact, compatibility with Monroe County Conference of Plan and the petition meeting the following HP overlay criteria that I have mentioned before. I'm now take questions.
Right, thank you so much, Mr. Myers. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I don't have any questions, but I love all the old pictures. I love looking through the old documents or at least trying to read some of them. I wasn't successful in one or two, but this is quite extensive and is really fun to to review.
Commissioner Jones?
I was wondering if if the print shop was that, how how did that come about originally? Does anyone know that? What its use was? Was there a newspaper printed there or something?
I don't know if they have anything in this brief letter regarding the print shop. But there was some conversation about its use in the past during the HP board meetings. And I'm sure that the petitioner could also offer some information on that, the history of that.
It was just an outbuilding and then back in like the.
Can you introduce yourself, please, sir?
Oh, I'm David Ray.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm David Ray. My wife Mary, we were the ones that lived at the house on Maple Grove Road. It was just an outbuilding structure and I think it was in the fifties. There was an author that lived at the house and he converted that outbuilding into a print shop. So we just kind of, we re-ruffed it, fixed up the inside and just just it's fixed up, but it's not a print shop anymore.
Thank you.
All right, so next we will hear from the petitioner or petitioner's representative if there's anything you wanted to add.
Just that we love the place, our family, we want to keep it in the family. But just the the cost of renovating that giant barn is something that we don't want to pass on to our kids. And so we we would like our kids to live in the house because it's just my wife and I. They have kids and they want to raise their family there. So we kind of came up with that solution is they can buy the house, we'll move into the barn and fix that up, but we need the historical overlay to do that. So the barn needs extensive renovation with rough and just prevent the water damage from progressing. So we would just like to be able to kind of make it a multi-generational farmstead out there.
Right, thank you. Let's see if there's any anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. Either raise your hand on the zoom screen and and TSD, I'm going to need to see that. There's any hands raised? Or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room? Thank you.
Randy Cassidy, all I have to say is the extensive work and the quality that they're looking to do to in order to preserve preserve the history of what it is. My hat is off to them, what they're doing in the multi-generational to try to keep this historic area that we have in Monroe County in the shape that you have. My hat's off to you and I say let's approve this and move things in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill? And while we're reading, I'll note that in the newspaper article, the builder of the home, Mr. Owens, sold it for thirty eight thousand dollars.
Well, and they talked about how much the people were paid to create this.
Yeah, it's amazing. I mean, just okay. It's amazing. Yeah, there's some, there's some really interesting stuff in here for anybody who's interested in local history. There's some really great material in here. So it's great to have. All right, I don't see any hands raised. Any other public comment on this item? I will, I will just say for the record that I really appreciate it. I know that this is going to be beneficial for the petitioner, but I think that this is really a gift to Monroe County. It is going to ensure the preservation of a real gem. And we really appreciate it when anyone who has historic property seeks this kind of overlay. So we really do appreciate it and and we recognize the significance of it. So with that, any other comments? The board, okay. All those in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty two dash thirty one signify by saying aye? Aye, motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. All right. With that, we don't have any appointments or announcements. We do have announcements for voter registration. Please register by October eleventh. October twelfth, early voting begins and you can also make your application to receive an absentee ballot by mail as well. We are accepting applications for all boards and commissions, whether it be for the current year or for next year. The next blood drives are October twenty first from ten to three and November ninth from one to six. Both of those are at Ivy Tech. Go to redcross.org to make an appointment. And just a reminder that we do have office hours six times a month. It's an opportunity for the public to meet with one of us as a group or individually to share concerns, to share ideas. And those are available and listed on the calendar. They're all zoom meetings. Go to co.monroe.in.us. Look at the calendar and there are six different days and times throughout the month where you can meet with one of us during our office hours. Anything else for the good of the order?
Well, if you want to vote by absentee ballot, you have to have that into the clerk's office by, I believe it's October the twenty seventh. Also, people in general aren't aware of the fact that they can apply for what's called a travel board to help them vote where people will come out to their home to help with the filling up. Well, they'll bring the ballot to you and then they'll take it back to the clerk's office once it's completed.
Anything else? All right, with that, we are going to be adjourned. We do have a short work session agenda. Let's come back at eleven forty. I'm sorry. Yeah, eleven forty, would that be okay?
Sure.
All right, we'll come back at eleven forty for the work session. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, TSD cats, and we're adjourned.